Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 5 business meeting as well as a budget workshop. Would you please stand with us as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all due diligence, without any bias, with liberty and justice for all.
Being unaware of any changes to the agenda, may we have a motion to accept the agenda tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, agenda stands. Earlier this year, the Webster Board of Education -- seat in the Board of Education became vacant, and consistent with New York education law and consistent with the Board's authority to act as a corporate body, a vote of the majority of the Board is required to fill a vacancy by appointment. To that end, the Board has asked for letters of interest as well as a resume from interested candidates, and from those candidates, the Board has selected Mike Deedy to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of Fritz Killian. Therefore, may we entertain a motion to appoint Mike Deedy to fill the vacant seat of the Webster Board of Education?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike. We need to swear you in now. If you will, please. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Webster Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I will.
Congratulations.
Is there anybody in the audience here?
That you'd like to introduce?
Sure. My wife, Tracy Deedy, and my two boys, Michael and Matthew Deedy, were kind enough to be here today to see this, so thank you.
Well, congratulations, Mike. And little do you know how much work we're in half playing for you. We have also learned that the Webster representative to the Monroe Boces Number One Board of Education, which is currently held by Maggie Markham, she's not seeking reelection. We therefore thank Mrs. Markham for her years of service, but in regard to that, Tom Nusbecca has expressed interest in serving in that position. So we have before us a resolution that reads, "Tom Nusbecca residing in the Webster School District is hereby nominated as a candidate for membership on the Monroe Boces Number One Board for term of office to begin July 1, 2015, and end June 30, 2018." Do we have a second to that resolution?
Anne.
Thank you, Anne. Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor of that resolution? Say aye. Aye? Opposed? We're all set on that. Now, we do have to point out, however, that this doesn't mean Tom is leaving the Board at this time, because you can serve on both the Webster School Board and the Boces Number One Monroe Board. Correct, Tom?
That's correct.
So you'll be doubly busy.
Yes, I will.
All right. Let's move on. The Board of Education would like our public to know that our schools are working remarkably well. Our public schools here in Webster, they're governed by an elected school board. Our Board, our administrators, our teachers, our staff, they work tirelessly to provide countless opportunities and growth of our children under the strict guidelines and requirements in financial accountability and transparency. Parents in our school district, they manifest pride and satisfaction in the education that our children are receiving. So what better measure exists to validate the existence of our public schools than the achievement of our graduates and the satisfaction of our parents? So why is it so impossible to find out what our state aid runs will be this year? This inability is making it extremely difficult for us to accurately put together a budget for the consideration of our voters. With that being said, we'd like to propose a resolution. And I just got to call it up. Whereas the New York State Schools Board -- the New York State School Boards Association and the Webster Central School District call upon the state to immediately release the 2015-2016 state aid proposal and corresponding school aid runs allocating the approximately 1.1 billion increase as presented in the executive budget proposal, and whereas, in our memory, it is unprecedented for the state to withhold the release of executive budget aid runs, these aid runs are not simply a state budget tradition. They are necessary and indeed critical to the logical budget development process for hundreds of school systems and districts across the state. And whereas, just like at the state level, the budget process begins well before any voting deadlines, all stakeholders in the school district community, including taxpayers, parents, teachers, students, school boards, and other school leaders play an important role. And whereas, in fact, the property tax cap first proposed and enacted by the state in 2011 requires school districts to utilize the executive budget run aids to formulate a tax cap calculation, which under current law, school districts are required to submit a 2016 proposed levy to the state by March 1 in order to calculate a district-specific tax cap figure. Establishing a proposed tax levy is impossible without a projection of state revenue. And whereas, in order to establish a tax cap calculation, State Education Department guidance directs school districts to use applicable executive budget computer runs to estimate anticipated building aid and transportation aid, the withholding of this aid run makes this impossible. And whereas, the budget bill released Wednesday, January 21, 2015, also does not include any language regarding how any potential state aid would be distributed. Even if our school districts had the capacity to decipher the proposed school aid formulas, they do not have the information needed to do so. And whereas, this is not a matter of politics or even of a policy debate. This is a matter of basic government function and a transparent, informed decision-making process for our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Webster School District hereby calls on the New York State Governor, Andrew M. Cuomo, to amend his executive budget to include a state aid proposal that allocates and distributes to school districts the approximate 1.1 billion school aid increase. Do we have a second to that resolution? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Mike, just, I think it might be helpful for the community to know that whereas the governor has suggested districts utilize that 1.7 percent increase, that I believe that was the percentage, that is an average. It is not a percentage that our district can count on to more accurately predict its state aid revenue. So it's not just an unwillingness on our part to use that as a guidance. It's not an ability for us because it is an average, not a per-district.
I would add to that, Anne, that it's possible that Webster could get less. Further discussion? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would simply ask at the end of the meeting that the Board, we have this resolution printed out for all our legislators, that you would simply stay and sign.
Seven hundred five pounds.
Yes.
And then they'll be mailed.
Yes. Thank you. All right, we move on. It's very interesting. The school calendar is being looked at right now, and one of the interesting points is that school for students will start before Labor Day. Carmen, would you like to highlight some of the?
Yes. Thanks, Mike. So because Labor Day next year is the latest it can possibly be, and whereas, we don't want to be going to school after July 4, 2016, so we need, contractually, we need to have so many workdays and so many days that the kids are in school, and also so many days that the teachers and staff are in school as well. We needed really to find a collaborative solution to this calendar dilemma, which is the worst next year for 1516, and for 1617, it's not much better. It's a little bit better, but not by much. So for the next two years, we're probably going to have to, again, try to have a creative solution to this, because never in the history that we could find for Webster students have we gone to school before Labor Day. But next year, or sorry, in about six months, in September, we will be starting, we'll be starting school on September 1 for teachers, and then the kids report to their first day on September 2 and 3. They'll have a four-day weekend for Labor Day, and then we'll have a traditional calendar. That's right, yeah. So from the kids' point of view, they'll go to school for two days and get four days off, and then they'll start again that traditional school schedule. We, unlike the last two school years, 1314 and 1415, we do not have a two-week Christmas break. It's a week and a half, so it's still really nice. And we will have, you know, again, we've normally had four superintendent's conference days throughout the school year, and we will do that again. We will again have parent conferences, kindergarten conferen -- or sorry, K-5 elementary conferences in the fall and again in the spring, and so that will be part of our calendar. And we will be looking at a end date and a graduation in late June, just like we have this year. So we'll be graduating on, most likely, that Sunday, June 26. So I think those are the highlights that we have in this calendar. It still has a February recess, and so some parents were asking about the February recess, if it's ever going to go away. It's not going away yet, so. Questions? This is the first read. We'll do a second read in a couple weeks.
So Carmen, this calendar is put together by a group of superintendent's or people in Monroe Boces One?
Yep. So this is a calendar that is really, it's adopted, it's worked, it's worked on by superintendent's, a few principals, across the county, as well as teachers, a representative from NICE, and then obviously a representative of some Boces as well, and then it's brought to all the superintendent's in, across the county. We take, we take a look at it, and the goal is for all 19 districts to really try to follow a very similar schedule that Boces follows, because our, many of our children, especially at the high school, attend Boces, attend classes at Monroe One Boces and some at Monroe Two. So we want to make sure that when we're in session, Boces is in session, and when Boces is on, when they're on break, we're on break.
And also, I mean, we bus a lot of kids to private schools.
Correct.
And if, I mean, it would be difficult if...
Yeah. And a special thanks to, because again, I think without the collaboration with our teach, with WTA, our teachers' union, this would not, this would not occur. And, you know, if we could not start school before Labor Day with kids, you know, those days, like just before Thanksgiving, we would have to go to school on those days. We'd have to go to school almost up to Christmas Eve, and, you know, there'd be some alterations to our traditional breaks as well.
Right.
So this is a nice creative solution that serves everyone's interest.
Excellent.
So that's first read. Okay?
Okay.
We need to vote on this? We need to vote on this?
No, not yet. You have to vote after second read.
Okay. All right. That completes our business meeting, and I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Sue. It is our tradition to have our vice president of the Board of Education to facilitate the budget workshops. So Sue, you want to just sit there or?
Yeah, I'll sit here. This is fine. Thank you, Mike. So, you know, they say if you want to stay young, you should do something new every day. So today, what we're going to do that's new is we're going to have a new person presenting the budget, and like Mike referred to, we're going to try to work on a budget with no school aid runs. So we're doing something new today. We'll keep ourselves young. Brian?
Thank you. I'll do my best to guess what we're going to get. And thank you earlier for that nice segue into what we will be presenting. So I would like to give you a revenue update on some of the other areas that are outside of state aid, where we're going to fall for those, and then go over some of those expenditure areas that are outside of our program and outside of instruction. Our central services, which are our support, community education, our debt service, our building budgets, athletics, and the big ticket items and benefits, which is an ever-growing part of our budget. And then do a little summary and give time for questions and answers, and go over a rough idea of what we could do next time we meet. So first update on state aid. If anybody would like to, you can insert an expected number right there. What is, we all hear when the governor says, "Plan for 1.7." Does that mean an extra 1.7 for Webster? And you'll see, no, it doesn't, and I'm going to break that down for everybody. So really, what the budget has become right now for myself and working with the Carmen and the other administrators is just planning for every possible scenario that could come about on the revenue side with state aid. What would happen if this happens? What's going to happen if this happens? So we're just planning really for the multiple scenarios when it comes to state aid. Our tax levy, earlier at a budget advisory committee, I presented that our levy limit would be 4.4 percent. Right now, it's at 4.01 percent, and I could explain the difference very easily. A chunk of that calculation is dependent on one thing and one thing only, and that is the governor's run for building aid. You take the number from the governor's run and you put it right into the tax cap formula. We don't have that, so we have to take a best guess at it. I can run 1,000 different calculations, but I always want to err on the side of caution when it comes to that. I want to overestimate what our building aid is going to be, for the sheer purpose of, you don't want to underestimate it because it's going to inflate your tax levy number. So if you underestimate and you go out at a higher number, the comptroller's then's going to tell you, "Well, you went above your limit, you overtaxed," and who knows what could happen in that scenario. So I took a very conservative approach to our building aid number, not having the specific number, which dropped our overall tax levy number down. Could this be below what we could actually go out at? Yes, but we are under the March 1 deadline to submit, so given those constraints, I thought it was most prudent way was to overestimate our building aid. Sales tax should remain flat. Our pilots, our payments in lieu of taxes should remain flat as well at just a little less than $1 million. Our program rate of fund balance will remain steady at 5.5 million. And our reserves are comfortable at using the same amount as last year to help fund next year's budget. Our miscellaneous items, our interest, things like that, some refunds that come in, we're expecting an additional $25,000. A lot of that, and I'll touch on that when we go over the community part, comes with extra revenue from a program that the Aquatic Center is going to run. So the cost increase will be more than offset by the expected revenue we should be seeing from that program that they're going to be running. So state aid, what would happen if there is no agreement in time for us? We are up against the late April deadline to approve our budget, get the property tax information out to the state, so what happens if there is no agreement? Well, our foundation aid is still going to be frozen. We know that. That has been locked in, so whatever we had last year, that's what we were going to get. A lot of the things we can predict because they have not manipulated the formula. When you talk about manipulating the formulas, it's the foundation aid formula that has been manipulated. A lot of the expense-driven formulas, transportation, building, Boces, those haven't been manipulated, so we could still run those and see what's going to come out for us next year. So transportation aid for us would be a loss of about $100,000, so about 5.9 million in 1516. Combination of the fact our aid ratio is going to go down for transportation. We are looking wealthier in the eyes of New York State, so our aid ratio goes down as our property values go up and the personal income goes up. Building aid will remain stable at 6.2 million for 1516, as well as Boces aid. Boces aid is similar to transportation aid because that is driven a lot by the wealth factor, but we are able to offset those losses in sheer expense volume. So the rate's gone down, but we're buying more from Boces, buying more equipment, buying more services, more professional development, more of the stuff they're doing is funneling through Boces, so we could keep that stable for that reason, in spite of that aid ratio coming down a touch. Our public excess cost aid, we lose about $50,000 there. That's another one, aid ratio coming down to about 1.2. That is the excess money we receive for students with disabilities. That's over and above and beyond what the state deems as our local cost. Same thing with the private excess cost aid. That's a significant hit. That is also a function of students and programs. So we're losing money there as well on the private excess cost aid. It is a lot of money to lose. It's a very, very fickle aid revenue because of, you know, you lose one kid out of a very expensive program, they pull the aid simultaneously.
Right. That makes sense, yeah.
And then our instructional materials aid dips, ebbs and flows minimally as the population changes. Whereas we've kind of plateaued with students, this is driven by all students in the district, so as those numbers fluctuate, not necessarily in regards to the kids that walk through our building drive those. And then everybody's favorite is the gap elimination adjustment would remain at 6.3 million dollars for next year. So our total state aid, based on what we know now, if everything happens, and there is no agreement, we're looking at a loss of almost a half a million, a little over half a million dollars, or a 1.44 percent reduction. So our 1.7 just became a loss of 1.44.
Brian, can I go back? I'm sorry, to ask a question regarding the private excess cost. Is that because our aid has gone, the ratio has gone down, or because?
Right, a little bit. The ratio, that's part of it, but the larger part of it is the swing in the student count.
So we are anticipating more students being educated in-house, or just that we don't have as high costs?
They left the private excess cost system. They could be back here, they could be on a different program, they could have moved away.
From like a Mary Carriola to a center-based program at Boces, correct? All right.
So Brian, when I look at those last two bullets, the takeaway from your last two slides or three slides, the governor says, "You know what? We don't have an agreement? Count on 1.7 percent. An increase of 1.7 percent."
Right.
But in a way, that's very misleading, very disingenuous, because for districts like us, we're not looking at 1.7 add, we're looking at a 1.4 percent loss.
Correct.
In aid. Correct? And this is also just one last piece. This is 1.4 percent loss in aid, or total, let's say, a reduction of five, almost a half a million dollars, when the state has $8 billion more in surplus than they did last fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly.
So the other, because when you talk about the 1.7, that's across, that's not just foundation aid, that's across the expense-based aid. So as somebody's losing expense-based aid, somebody's gaining. So as our Boces aid goes down, somebody's is going up. As our transportation aid ratio is going down, somebody else's is going up. So it all interplays with one another. You know, our transportation aid ratio might go to 64 percent, well, somebody just went from 88 to 90. That's the scenario throughout the state, because we're all hedged against each other on state averages. So as one looks wealthier, one looks poorer, and that's where those aid ratios, those expenditure-based runs go to.
Mike, I failed to explain this earlier. Just chime in here. We have a small group tonight. We're pretty casual on these.
So our total revenues are a little over 155 million. That's assuming the state aid under the current law and going to the tax cap. Majority of that increase is going to the tax cap with the loss of the state and some of the other areas. It's the tax cap, the property tax levy is the driver of why we can go higher than this So, wrong way. So the current state of education funding, what's happening? Where are we going? Well, fortunately, right now, the governor has total control over the process. And there's a term that a lot of people might be familiar with when it comes to the Albany Way of Budgeting. The three men in a room, they close the doors, and they come out on April 1, and this is what you have. In essence, it's going to trickle down to every municipality, every district that's like this, because we're up against that hard April deadline. So how much time could there be for community input in two weeks theoretically before the district is forced across the state to adopt a budget? So in essence, something similar like that could be happening all across the state because there really isn't time to hold community forums, community meetings, to get real quality input once you know what you have. So it's really, the balance of power right now is tilted strongly towards the governor in this scenario and away from the locality, away from the districts. So one of the things we could do throughout the, what we've tried throughout the budget process is just maintain what we do. Meet with all our stakeholders, you know, start from the ground up. What do you need to continue your program? What are some additional things you would like to do? That has continuously been the focus, all while trying to run multiple scenarios on the revenue side to see what we could do from everybody as we build the budget. So on the first areas is our central services, our Board of Education costs, the district clerk costs, the meeting costs for the budget vote, superintendent's office, and then finance, personnel administration, insurance, our Boces administrative budget. Everybody knows we are the largest district in Monroe One, so we share the largest amount of costs for the Boces administrative budget. So that is a significant cost for us. Our school association dues and our refunds and judgments against the districts, a lot of those are the small tax assessment complaints that we see. We plan for some of those. So these are really your back office operations. So where are majority of our money being spent on? Well, on salaries, because we're a human-based industry, supplies maintaining, and our contractual is going up a little. Our insurance costs going up primarily due to our changeover in the way we funded our pupil accidents insurance. That new policy is really driving that cost there. And then you'll see the significant decreases on the Boces service, and that is, I've mentioned before at a couple of the other workshops, the philosophical difference. A lot of our Boces costs that really weren't central service or business administration in nature are being shifted to other parts of the budget. We talked already about in buildings and grounds, our health and safety items and some of the support there, coming from there, this is where it's coming from, right here, this part of the budget.
Reimbursement for Boces?
It will not. It does not affect, how we code it does not affect at all our reimbursement from Boces. So some of the areas where we're looking at, the largest part of this budget is the Boces administrative costs, and some of the other areas you see, our finance is 21 percent, our treasurer, our auditing, all gets wrapped up into there. Our human resources expenses for that is 15 percent. So it really gives you a nice puzzle and explanation of some of, what are those back office things that have to happen to work on a daily basis? So some of those changes I wanted to break out for you and for this upcoming year. We're getting some breakage in this area from retirements in the business office, the new guy over here. Our contractual, our audit costs are increasing. Our contractual, our audit costs are increasing, our, some professional development costs are increasing for the business office and superintendent's office. The things that we have to go to to maintain certifications are becoming more and more costly. But then the BOSI's, the major shifts, like we said, health and safety to the buildings and grounds budget. IEP direct to the special education budget, that was being paid out of business office before. It's not really a business office expense, so I think it gives a better true picture of where everything is. Our student data and management system goes to instruction, our servers, our networking, computer and printer and copier, all going to technology and away from the business administration. Gives a better sense of, I think, what our costs are in every group. And then the insurance, really the addition of the student accidents insurance premium plan is driving the cost there. Any questions on that before we move on to the next area about our back office operations?
Showing that one million dollar decrease, it really is going to be an increase someplace else.
Correct.
Remember when we did, like when Brian did the, yeah, B and G budget about four weeks ago, three weeks ago, we saw.
A shift of about a hundred and eighty thousand of it went to buildings and grounds.
I didn't want people to think that, oh my gosh, you're saving us a million dollars and we're only five hundred thousand dollars short from the.
Right, right.
You should be so lucky.
So community education budget, salaries just going up based on contractual, contractual language. Supplies, we have a rising cost to pool chemicals, it's not much, but it's there. And the seventeen thousand dollars is really increased expenses for Red Cross, had raised their training fees to us. We do train a lot of people through the aquatic center and the staff over there. So turning that around is going to be a minor increase for us. And then really the increased instructor fees for the youth enrichment program is the bulk of that seventeen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand of it actually. And that's the youth enrichment program they're going to start running. With the charge will offset that to an extent where we think it'll actually be a small profit maker for the aquatic center. So the twenty-five thousand got added on the revenue side with the addition of the costs here.
So it's not like we have to absorb a six percent increase, it's going to be offset on the revenue side, okay?
Correct, yep. Under the miscellaneous that I had talked about, the additional twenty-five thousand was surely for running this new program at the aquatic center, which will offset these increased instructor costs.
So the Red Cross training fees are in addition to the youth enrichment program?
Correct.
So those are classes that both our coaches are required to take, is that correct? Or is this strictly a pass-through because the students will pay the increased Red Cross fees?
It's the fees that we have to pay to get our people certified.
It is, it is, that cost is for our staff, okay.
Our debt service, it's pretty stable from year to year. The one thing I will mention about this right now is every year previous, for about the past five years, a certain percentage of our debt service reserve has been allocated towards our bond payments. I have not gone ahead and done that yet, just with not knowing what's happening. Because we are using a substantial amount of that this year, which will take a sizable chunk out of that reserve. So one of the things I was hoping to wait on was for better state aid information to see if we will have to utilize that reserve to help offset that, those costs a little bit. So right now, it looks like our debt service is going up about six hundred and seventy, six thousand dollars. That is with nothing from the reserve applied towards it, wherein years past, there have been amounts applied towards it. So this is a true raw number right now. I'm hoping to get better information on the state aid side to see how much could we use from that reserve before it starts teetering on, we might be using too much, you know. And what an appropriate amount would be. So we're using that right now as kind of a placeholder, I guess is the best answer I could use for you. And then our transfers, we talked about the transfer to capital for doing the small hundred thousand dollar projects. I've included that here as a reminder. And then our transfer to federal fund, that's our share of summer programs. We're required to put a, transfer a certain amount into the summer program for special education. Next, the building budgets, a total of one point six million dollars for fifteen sixteen. And I've broken down every building for us right now. One of the things that's included in all the building budgets, our office supplies, building equipment, our copier, printing costs. Our cultural arts and enrichment programs across the district, classroom supplies, textbooks, library books and materials. And then additional stuff at the high schools and middle schools that's separated from the elementary school. Some AV supplies, some additional co-curricular items that are included in the building budgets, as well as auditorium supplies and commencement expenses at the high school, which are a significant cost increaser. So that's why the high schools are significantly higher than the other buildings. So.
How much of an increase is this over last year?
Over last year, it's about ten percent overall. And a majority of that is because we're dedicating additional funds. We have doubled the increase in the cultural arts program and the enrichment program. A majority of that overall increase is coming from that across the board, especially, it greatly affects the elementary budgets more because they're smaller. So when you doubled their enrichment and cultural arts programs, it raised theirs significantly higher. The other thing we've done is increased library book allocations. There is, as we went through the process, an extreme need to turn over the collections, hadn't been done in a long time. Increased the nonfiction allocations to a lot of the libraries. And really wanted to try to work on, I guess the best way to say is right sizing where the students are now. Actually, some of our smallest library budgets in the buildings were in the buildings with the largest population of students. So I took a look at that from a global perspective, tried to look at a per pupil expenditure and even out an increase in areas that had not had increases in several years. And our discussions with the building principals. Minor textbook increase across the board, a lot of that has to do with the consumables. And then classroom supply increase overall across all eleven buildings, just really mostly a response to some of the curriculum changes that are going on. So the building budgets are roughly one percent of the entire budget. Our per pupil expenditures, based on elementary, middle and high, are around a hundred and fifty-three dollars per student, one seventy-one at the middle school and two oh six at the high school. So like I said, we really looked at that per pupil and tried to make every building as fair and equitable and bring them up to previous years.
The areas on the previous page, those that are allowed to be purchased through BOSI's would be for aid purposes? So if any of those, like library book allocations or textbook increases?
Yeah, anything we could do through BOSI's, we'll still funnel through BOSI's.
Okay.
It's just part of the building allocation.
Yep.
Frozen or decreased over the last several years?
For a considerable amount of time.
Right. So it's really just.
Trying to recoup some of the losses from the economic downturn.
Right, thank you.
Athletics is the next area we took a look at, with an overall increase of about three and a half percent from year to year, or sixty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The total budget is a little over one point eight million. That is one point one five percent of the total overall budget. Two major cost drivers, salaries, the contractual increase over fourteen, fifteen, what we're expecting. And then really, at the mercy of outside influences, I guess is the best way to say it with athletics. Because there's a lot of, we can't do stuff in-house like you can with buildings and grounds. You have to outsource a lot of our athletics as far as athletic trainer. We rent ice time, we rent bowling alley, we pay for bowling teams. A lot of those costs aren't really going up with inflation. They're kind of, they know we have to use their facilities, and so those costs aren't exactly aligning with your standard inflationary increases. Uniform increases are about three percent. The officials' fees are a very, very large chunk of the overall athletic budget, what we pay for officials, that's going up by three percent. Our repair and reconditioning costs, a lot of it going into the helmets, a significant increase in some of those to make sure they're checked, double-checked and top-notch for, not only for health and safety, but then your insurance reasons. So there's increased costs involving that.
Reflect increase in additional teams or anything, or just we're status quo with that, these are just?
These are just status quo.
Excellent orientation, but I don't recall this part in it, the procurement process for contracts. So can you speak to that, or is that like a separate?
Sure, we have purchasing guidelines for the district. And usually depending on the limit, we'll, most of the time we bid, we're part of the BOSI's cooperative on that. And so a lot of these items, a lot of our uniforms, we bid actually in-house for uniforms. We drop the specifications and then put that out ourselves. But a lot of the supplies, you know, your athletic tape and things like that, we'll go with a BOSI's bid and get the best price we can. A lot of, some of the other things, they're sole source providers that unfortunately, there's not a lot of people to bid against for some of those things. We do as much with state contract as we possibly can as well. So very, very rarely do we run across, it's a sole source provider, but this would be one of the areas where it's a sole source. The only place locally we could get something is from one person.
Thank you.
Now for the fun part, talked about benefits and the future of healthcare. Think it is aptly diagrammed here, it's going to be taxes, taxes, taxes on our healthcare plan. That is the future of healthcare. You know, our consortium is looking right now to avoid over eight million dollars in additional Affordable Care Act taxes being placed on it. I was at a meeting for three hours this afternoon discussing that. You know, why are we now required on W twos to put our insurance costs on it? What's the only thing that goes on W twos? It's for income tax reporting. Usually add up one plus one, it does equal two. You would imagine somewhere down the line, that information will be used for taxable purposes. So this is kind of the, what's driving our costs when we talk about benefits and healthcare. It's going to be these taxes that are going to be assessed to our plans. But before we get into that, let's talk about the benefits overall. They make up twenty-six percent of our entire budget, it's a huge chunk of our entire school budget. Pensions, we have the employees' local retirement system, that's our, the majority of our non-instructional staff, our non-certified staff are in that. Our teachers' retirement system, I will say, we are experiencing a significant savings this year due to contribution rates decreasing immensely, and I'll touch on that. Our FICA, which is our social security and Medicare. And then our unemployment insurance, our health and dental, our flexible spending administration, our health reimbursement accounts, our health and dental buyouts and our life insurance are all wrapped up into this huge conglomerate we like to call benefits. So let's take a look at the pensions, what they've done, I've got back to two thousand, two thousand and one for you. So teachers' retirement system is moving from a seventeen point five-three percent rate. So that's what we have to contribute for every one dollar in teacher salaries. Now, when that goes to next year, it's going to be thirteen point two-six percent. It's a significant reduction from year to year on a very large amount of salaries. If you notice back in two thousand, two thousand and one, oh two, oh three, historically low rates, still riding the effect of the dot com in the late nineties. Usually there's about a three-year lag in the retirement systems. They're still living off their income growth before it hits, then you see it spike back up. But I think what they learned, what actually hit us doubly hard was they were under-collecting during the good years. And it hit doubly hard for school districts because at the time that the rates start skyrocketing right here in both pensions, that's when the state pulled the plug on funding. So it was, we had the double-digit yearly increases and a lack of funding, so it was a double whammy. If you look, if you go back thirty years, these rates actually, you know, it's like riding a roller coaster when it comes to both systems. But right here, I think they triggered, from now on, there's going to be a mandatory minimum contribution. There's no longer going to be the, you know, hey, we're riding, stock market right now is great. I don't think we'll ever see this again, they're going to have a mandatory minimum to even that out for people as we go.
Have a reserve.
Correct, that, right now, the only reserve we can have is for this side, the employee retirement system. It would be nice if they just allowed for pension reserve, took the ERS title off of it and just made it a pension reserve that you could use for either or. The rate is a little lower, reduction for the ERS, the employees' retirement system from twenty point one to eighteen point two. We're not seeing any savings there because that rate reduction is offset by salary increases. So we're paying on a higher amount of salaries, which will chew up that savings. Whereas that, you know, a twenty percent reduction in the rate in the TRS system, that's a significant amount of dollars coming off.
So we are actually having a net reduction in the.
In the pensions, yes. Normally, this would be great, step for healthcare. Right now, we're a member of RASP one and two, we participate in consortiums to try to control our costs. We do have some of the lowest cost-based plans in the state for the quality of the benefit. There is no denying that, what our overall cost for our value plan and for the other plans, the cost is significantly cheaper than a lot of other areas. Right, our friends to the south at GST just dissolved their consortium because they were already at the Cadillac tax for their plans. It was unsustainable. So we have a very good business model, the way RASP one, RASP two are run. Health insurance itself is twelve percent of our entire budget. Our health plans run on a federal fiscal year, so they go from January one to December thirty-first. So it's very interesting, it crosses two school fiscal years, which presents some challenges to try to predict the second half of the school budget. So as we're planning for fifteen sixteen, we're also trying to guess what's going to happen to health insurance come January one. Because we don't know for that second half of next school year what our rates are yet. So it kind of trying to predict what's going to happen is sometimes difficult. Especially when it comes to retiree costs, because not all of our plans are in RASP one and two. We have some Medicaid and Medicare plans that are outside of consortiums that are kind of more aligned with their yearly increases to the medical rate of inflation. And that's what we experienced this year with our Medicare Advantage plan. It doubled unexpectedly, so that second half of the year kind of surprise was that the plan doubled in cost based on Exelis's book of business increase. So that is roughly, four hundred and fifty of our retirees are on that plan. So that's a significant cost increase, about a half a million dollars in one half of a year alone.
Anne's question a few minutes ago around pension, you talked about the TRS rate going down and that there was savings in that particular pension cost. But if you now have a five hundred thousand dollar or a half a million increase in Medicare Advantage, is that?
Right.
In a way, it's, you know, it's great to have the decrease in pension, but unfortunately, it just got eaten up by the increase in taxes.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And our retiree costs are becoming a larger portion of our healthcare costs. Right now, there are thirty-nine percent. Right now, they're 39 percent of our entire healthcare costs. And within five to six years, it's going to be a one-for-one, one active for every retiree. And then after that, it's going to be more retirees than active. It's the same system with the pensions. People are collecting from the pension systems longer than they ever put into it. It's, it's the same economic model that's putting strain on the system. It's the same thing with the social security system. The system was built for 15 active employees for every one retiree. Now there's about 2.3 active employees for every one person collecting on social security. So I mean, that, those are strains on budgets and on benefits that people hadn't thought of or expected with, when the systems were created.
So over the last 12 months, when we've been discussing vesting options, and we've talked about the increase in the number of years investing instead of, instead of 10 years of full-time continuous service going up to 20, this is one of the reasons why, because, you know, one of our greatest cost drivers, and it may not be right now, but it's, it's getting there close, you know, soon, but in five to 10 years, it will be retiree healthcare. So that's one of the reasons why we've been spending so much time and focus on retiree healthcare when we have collective bargaining.
So a lot of what's driving our, our rates when it comes to our premiums are the Affordable Care mandates, and I just ran off a few here for you. Our patient-centered outcomes research institute, it's, a lot of people just call it the PCORI. $2 per member per month. So everybody that's part of the consortium, that's a member, it's $2 per everybody that's currently on the rolls, per month. Our temporary reinsurance fee, that's $63 per member per year. The medical device tax, that's a trickle-down tax, that's 2.3 percent. In essence, what's going to happen is the doctor's office, hospitals are going to have to pay more for their medical devices. They're going to request more reimbursement and, which is just going to drive up our claims. The insurers' fee, that's about, that's a pass-through, that's about 2.3 percent per insurer per year. That, that's when I talk about the $8.1 million hit to the consortium, that's that one right there. And then our additional penalties for not offering plans, that's 2,000 per person. The one thing we've avoided is that because we now offer the bronze plan to every employee that walks through the door. We don't contribute to it, all we have to do is offer it to them. They're more than welcome to take it, it's at 100 percent contribution on their end. As long as we offer to it, we avoid this. And then the Cadillac tax is looming in 2018. That's a $10,200 threshold for individual plans. So if the total cost of the plan gets to that, any dollar spent above $10,200 gets a 40 percent excise tax on top of it. Same thing with the family plans, 27.5. We are well underneath that for our value. Right now, it's, it's told that that's always going to be a moving target once 2018 hits. Don't know what that's going to go up to on a year-to-year basis. If that stays flat, there's no doubt with the way costs are increasing in medical, we will one day hit that, it's just a matter of when. Our extended, there are people still on the old extended plan. That is pretty close to hitting that, that tax within the next year or two. So it, it's an issue, but not an overly big issue.
And also two-person plan, the family plan?
You know what, that's a great question, and I, I don't know. I'd have to find out. I'm assuming that they would consider anything not an individual to be a family plan under, under the way it's derived. But you, you never know when it comes to, they're writing the law as we go, when it comes to things like this. So for, for our consortium, we're looking at, it's a little over $8 million that then gets petered out in our rate increases. So, but our rate increases are derived based on what we want to do. We want value to be the main plan. We want people off select. So the board of directors drives the rates higher for select and extended to get people off of that. So the rate for value went up significantly less year to year. So value went up about 4.9 percent, which, you know, was still much lower than medical rate of inflation. Select went up about 9.7 and extended was 11 percent. So there is some manipulation, so this isn't a true determination. So what is this costing us? I think the best way to try to describe that would be, so what's the year-to-year increase? So our health insurance year-to-year increase is about $1.8 million. That's the increased health insurance. We're saving $2 million on TRS, we're going up 1.8 in health. So that 1.8 increase, that includes, yes, some of the retirees. So if I teased out some of that, because the retirees are separate, they're, they're on a lot of the standalone plans that are outside the consortium that will get some of the other, the trickle-down taxes, but not the one because we're a consortium tax. We're looking at an 11 percent overall increase for next year. From this year, 1415, we're looking at 11 percent increase overall, which is 1.8 million. Now, when you take that 11 percent, how much of that is Affordable Care? Well, 3 percent of that is, that increase is solely on that Medicaid, Medicare Advantage Plan and the retirees that are on it. So of that 8 percent increase that's left, about 30 percent of that overall is the Affordable Care Act being trickled down. So of our 1.8 million, about $650,000 directly to us is attributable to the Affordable Care Act costs coming back to us through the consortium. The fun part about this is, is the first time ever, the, the government's running the tax like the property, like a property tax levy. They've asked for X amount of dollars, and there's all these entities that make up that. So for this year, it's $11.1 billion. They want their $11.1 billion. They don't care how they get it, similar to municipality sets levy. What makes up that is all the little parcels, the businesses, however you divide it up, all goes to that one number. In essence, that's the same way we're going to be taxed to get that $11.1 billion. So that eight, like what we're doing right now, we're currently in conversations to change our charter for RASP 2 so we could avoid that tax. So if everybody tries to do that, it's less of us paying the tax. So whoever's left behind has more to pay into that $11.1 billion. So if they tell us, we can't, no, you can't escape this cost, we're in it. You know, next year, they might ask, well, we don't need $11.1 billion, now we want $14 billion. So that 8 million share for us just went up considerably because, you know, there's no property value growth in healthcare.
And the amount that you're including on the W-2 is the person's?
It's the person's pre-tax and what the district pays as well, so.
It has both.
Correct. The IRS now has?
Well, they know.
They know what, everybody is paying and they know what we are paying.
It helps to also take a look at whether you're approaching Cadillac level between the two.
They start cutting their pennies.
So like I said, we're, you know, we're exploring to avoid the Affordable, you know, we listened to, our attorney give us the legal breakdown of what can we do to avoid these taxes on us in order to save that money, to mitigate our rates. And what I took away from it today was is this, we have a 95 percent chance of being successful, but it's the IRS and they can come back and say, well, we changed our mind, now you owe us it because you no longer qualify. So it's, it's very difficult to deal with, we're incorporated under New York State, but with these federal regulations on it, you know, which one do we follow? One of the other things we're looking at is to roll some of the Medicare plans into the consortium to see if that will mitigate some of the cost increases from year to year, rather than being out on their own. Could we suck those in, because all the districts are in, in the same, same boat? And really negotiating premium contribution rates in the long-term, it's a long-term solution, because the majority of the current retirees pay 0 to 10 percent. So there's no motivation for them to switch. That, I mean, that's just the truth of the matter of what, as the, as some of those more expensive plans go up, there's, there's no motivation because they're not saving money. I mean, they're in, in any, any way, so it's, it's a sunk cost, those increases, we're, we're really eating ourselves. So, you know, normally you could spin it, there's an opportunity for both the employee and the employer to save money in some of those scenarios. But due to the low contribution rates at that time, there is not for either party. So overall, our benefit is a very small dollar increase of just $127,000 because of that significant reduction in TRS. It saved us a substantial amount and offset all the healthcare increase and offset some of our smaller increases. For instance, workers' comp has gone up by about 18 percent, but it's not a huge cost burden because, you know, it's a significantly smaller overall number of just over a million dollars. But that TRS savings, you know, helped wipe out and eliminate most of those costs. So it's really a less than a third of a, it's about a third of a percent increase on our benefits overall, which is something very, very new that hasn't been happening in the recent future, recent past because the pension costs have stabilized and come down. It'd be nice if they just kind of stayed there and take some of the volatility out of it and remained somewhat stable for budgeting purposes. Any other questions on the benefits right now? It's, it's extremely large chunk of, of the overall budget. So just to review, we've, we've already done the buildings and grounds earlier and the transportation, but I wanted to remind you of those overall numbers. And then our central services, our community ad, what our debt service is looking like, our building budgets, athletics, and then benefits overall. So overall, this is about 48 percent of the budget we've done. But these are, you know, trying to hold off on the instructional pieces as long as possible to see where our state A lands. So that way we have the best information possible before we, we make decisions that are really affecting kids and program and, and those items. So we, we have the best information, so, you know, there isn't a lot of disappointment when we put a list out, this is what we'd like to do, this is what we're getting, so this is what we can do. Try to hold off till at least the end of the month to see some of the things we've been talking about throughout the budget process with our, with our administrative group.
Just looking for the date of the next meeting, what's the date of our next meeting?
I believe it's the 26th.
Is it the 26th?
4.01 percent. Not knowing, I mean, crystal ball, what does that interpret to the homeowner based on what you know?
Based on what I know, it, it's really too early to tell. Fortunately, our assessor has been preoccupied with some other matters. So getting the best information where she thinks we're going. Last year was unique with our town of Penfield portion having significant assessment come on the rolls. So that kind of skews, if, if I looked back and looked at what, what trended for our valuation over the last five years, if I go back 10 years, 15 years, you know, what are we really going to be? At this point, I feel hesitant to, to make any kind of prediction going forward of what the rate would be at 4.01. Historically, it, it would, it'd probably be about a point less, maybe a little bit more. Less than what we go out at the levy is what the rate ends up coming in at, probably a high twos, low threes, given our historical information. But as far as trying to predict what the valuation across the district will be, at this point, it's, it's pretty early to try to determine that. Right. I use that, I went right to that just for, this is our total possible maximum aid and revenue at this time that we could have.
Okay, do we have any additional questions, final questions?
Anything we can ask the public to do? To write letters, and do we have any letters set up for them to be able to copy off and send with addresses?
What a great question, Tom.
Thank you, Carmen.
We do have an advocacy page. Mike and I were talking with PTSA this morning. The advocacy, the advocacy page from our website, Websterschools.org, you'll see the link on the left-hand side. And that link went live about two weeks ago. And, and I know that it definitely has been used by our parents and our families. And so all they need to do is click and send. So there are sample letters right there for each, for the governor, as well as for Assemblyman John, Senator Nizolio, Senator Funky, and Assemblyman, the Majority Leader Morelli. And, you know, and they can pull down, they can pull down the letter, tweak it themselves if they'd like, or they can click and, or they can sign and, and send as well. Our teachers are actually doing handwritten letters, and we're collecting them tomorrow. And we expect hopefully to have close to 400 letters from our staff at least. And we'll be hand-delivering them to, to all of the, to those five individuals, or mailing them, either way. But I'm not sure if, if I, if I had known that Governor Cuomo was going to be in town yesterday to talk about how he loves teachers and also about the minimum wage, then we could have hand-delivered yesterday.
Thank you. And then just a quick agenda for next workshop on the 26th. We're going to tackle some of the instructional needs, the curriculum needs, special education, our pupil services, services, our instructional technology. One of the reasons for holding out on that was hopefully to have some more guidance on the Smart Schools Bond Act of what we can and can't do with that. I have a feeling from a lot of discussions is, is we're going to have a lot of access to buy equipment, hardware, and support, but we'll need probably people to, to help support it. And will that be allowed in that money? Because most of the districts are not set up right now to handle that kind of influx and those projects to go through without some additional human capital. So trying to wait to the last possible moment to see how that works out, to what, what might be our needs on, on the local end to, to support that money.
Ability with one of our major colleges right here in town, if it's primarily set up in training, to have internship discussions to allow for credit, to have like RIT students that are specializing in, in the IT work and things of that nature, to get credit to work towards something like that.
That would be a fantastic idea. So remember, the Smart Schools Bond Act was voted on by statewide and passed in November. And so every single district will receive a certain allocation of money that is basically, I mean, that's a, it's a pot of money that we, that we don't have to, we're, we're not giving back, we're not taking out a bond for this. And our share was $4.3 million. And unfortunately, Tom, I mean, you, you bring up a great idea. Unfortunately, we have no rules or regulations yet on how the money is being, is going to be used. Okay, hey, I look good in stripes.
All right, well, Brian, thank you very much for all the work you've put into this and all the thought you've put into it. And I know it's not a difficult, difficult. and all the thought you've put into it, and I know it's not a difficult, difficult, it's not an easy thing to do right now, but we do appreciate all that you're doing. And Board of Education, if you have any questions that you can think of, you know, along the way, just fire them off to Carmen and to Brian, and we will see everybody on March 26th at 6:30 in this room. Can I have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
First and second, all in favor. Thank you very much, have a nice evening, and it is 20 minutes to nine. Eight, eight!